November ninth, Planning Commission meeting now in session. As always, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. You can stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, with under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll be taking Roko, Commissioner Inga.
Here.
Commissioner Newman.
Present.
Vice Chair Heschler.
I'm here.
Chair Keldorff.
Here.
Commissioner Maga is out today, but we have quorum.
Thank you.
We will start with Public Communications. Anybody wishing to come on up? Come on up now. Introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Smith.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Michael's not here to share.
I'm sorry they're a little gooey. They're fresh out of the oven. So, yeah, sorry about that.
We'll disclose that. Cheryl brought this cookie.
Thank you, Cheryl.
So, my name is Cheryl Smith, and I'm here on behalf of the hundreds of neighbors and community members that we told you about last time that we got together. And we are concerned about the six-story apartment building that we believe plans have actually now been submitted for, for the Holly Kansas Grand Corner. We are concerned that this is going to set a precedence for not just our neighborhood, but for also the whole community. So because of that, and based on the amazing feedback that we received from this group, we decided that we would put together a presentation that everyone would be invited to. We've invited the City Council. We're inviting you. This is a formal invitation right here. We've invited the developers and the person who will manage the apartment complexes. We've invited the school board, the entire community. Everybody is welcome at our event. We have nothing to hide. This is going to be a fact-based presentation referencing a lot of other environmental impact reports, as well as the housing element. So it's not going to be a, oh, they said, and they're bad people. They're not bad people. We understand that they're here. They're part of our community, and they need to build something there. And we want to work with them, and we're going to take the opportunity to let them know and to let the community know what we feel that those standards should be. So I'm here to formally invite you on December 4th. I hope that you're able to join us at 6:30 to 8:00 in the library. We were able to reserve the bottom room of the library for us. And volunteer childcare is available if anybody has any kids. Thank you so much, and we look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you very much. What did you say? The cookie was delicious.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to come up at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll close Public Communications. Written Communications. I know there's one printed for us here.
Yes, one which was distributed and also posted online already, and it has to do with the public hearing item number H2.
Thank you. Consent calendar looks like just our meetings from October 26th. I will take a motion to approve. So moved.
I second.
And I'll take votes. Commissioner Inga.
Aye.
Commissioner Newman.
Yes.
Vice Chair Heschler.
Yes.
Chair Keldorff.
Yes.
Motion passes for O. Thank you. Okay, moving on to new public hearings. A conditional use permit for a new major wireless communication facility. The applicant is Dish Wireless. Is there a staff presentation?
Yes, we'll go ahead and hand that over to our project planner, Jasmine, who is now switching over here. So she'll go ahead and deliver the presentation and staff's recommendation.
Good evening. I'll be presenting Environmental Assessment 1351 and Conditional Use Permit 2303 at the site 710 East Grand Avenue. Dish Wireless is proposing to provide coverage via a major wireless communication facility at 710 East Grand Avenue. The project site is in the multifamily residential zone, which is our R3, and it is located at the southwest corner of Grand Avenue and Lomita Street. Specifically, it is located near the top of the Slope Traverse Street and directly above Smoky Hollow East and the West Zone. It is also bounded by multifamily, single-family, and neighborhood commercial zones. Dish Wireless is proposing to install six panel antennas that will be concealed inside the church steeple tower. The associated ground-mounted equipment will be contained in a new six-foot-high enclosure. And the applicant is proposing to retexture the FRP panel area only and repaint the entire steeple and the panel area. Staff has raised concerns to the applicant regarding the retexturizing of the FRP panel area only as it will alter the overall look of the church steeple and increase the potential warping, seams, discoloration, and it will have a patched-up appearance. Because the antenna panels will be mounted at a height of 44 feet, the wireless communication facility exceeds the maximum building height for the applicable zoning district, and a conditional use permit is required. The proposed project will be subordinate to the primary use of the property, which is a church. Staff is concerned with the proposed texture area being limited to the FRP panel section only as it will have the potential to appear altered and inconsistent with the remaining structure. And it will detract from the aesthetics of the steeple as well and the church overall as a whole. Staff has recommended, sorry. Staff has recommended that the proposed light-smooth texture finish be a material consistent with the existing church structure, and we are also recommending for it to be applied throughout the entire steeple and not just the FRP panel only. The proposed wireless communication facility will utilize an existing enclosure to conceal the antenna panels in a new six-foot-high concrete masonry wall enclosure to conceal the ground equipment from public view. By applying the light-smooth texture finish of a material consistent with the existing church buildings on-site throughout the entire steeple and repainting the entire steeple, the existing enclosure will be visually compatible with the building and its surroundings, and it will further conceal the facility from public view. Further, the facility completely conceals the facility from public view as well. The facility will be screened from the public view. It is located in an area that is already developed, and it will not alter or interfere with the existing issues of the site. It is not visible from along Grand Avenue or from the residential neighborhooding and abutting streets. And the new major wireless communication facility is approximately 0.2 miles away from another major wireless communication facility. As indicated earlier, we did receive one public comment raising issues regarding the desecration of the church and health concerns. Although Dish is the applicant, the church approved the submittal for the application and supports their request. Regarding the health concerns, Federal Telecom Act actually precludes the city from considering health concerns. Sorry. Therefore, that concludes my presentation, and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have. The applicant is also present to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jasmine.
You're welcome.
I have a question. You, the city staff, you had an issue with the finish of the exterior of the steeple? And you made recommendations, should it be approved, that that's what you would like to have happen? And that it was a smooth surface? Otherwise, it would look patched?
Correct. Yes. So they are proposing to re, to basically, what they're doing, if you look at that second image, is they're going to cut out from the steeple.
Right.
And they're going to put a panel in that will cover the antennas once they're mounted inside. That panel itself, they're proposing to retexture it and kind of smooth out the finish. So it kind of simulates a altered look because it's not going to be textured as a whole, basically, is what we're saying. So we are proposing for it to be retextured as a whole and not just painted as a whole.
Did the applicant agree to that condition?
No. They are here, and they do have alternatives for you. And ultimately, we are basically recommending the Planning Commission to move forward with our decision or recommendation to retexture the entire steeple. But we also want you to hear the alternatives the applicant has.
And you also mentioned with reference to the health issues for 5G that the state of California mandates that we as a city cannot make a judgment or a final decision on that?
Can I add some color to that? Yeah, so it's actually a preemption issue. It's not that they can't be considered. It's that it's a matter of federal law that trumps our local law. So how it plays out in the real world is that so long as a potential facility meets what they call RF, radio frequency emissions, standards that are governed by FCC federal regulations, if they're within those parameters, a city cannot deny a permit based on the radio frequency readings. So what has been provided as part of the application packet is an assessment that looks at the anticipated readings based on the specs of the facility, and it shows that it is, in fact, within the FCC regulations. So we would not have a basis to deny on emissions grounds due to radio frequency.
And one more, just to confirm that the church that owns the property would like to proceed with the project? They don't have an issue with it?
Yes, that is correct.
And I'm sorry to interject you. To clarify, I assume they have a lease that they would be obtaining rental monies from Dish, I assume?
Yes. So the property owner does have a lease agreement or are working on a lease agreement with Dish, and it is something that the city does not get involved in.
And also, if I may, just to add some text, texture, to what Jasmine was talking about. You know, when this came in, I think when we looked at it, we just felt that if you, the applicant came in and said, you know, as Jasmine indicated, you know, that you're going to go ahead and just carve out this 10-foot by eight-foot area on three of the facades of that steeple, of that tower, and then the project includes retexturing just that area. So our concern was that ultimately, as much as you could try to mirror and, you know, the appearance of the texture, there still will be a visual inconsistency, we think, when you do that. So in order to avoid, and then ultimately, you know, I think it's kind of like, you know, when you've seen houses that are stuccoed, and they come in and they put in a door or a window. You see some evidence of that. And because this is a prominent structure, although it's not a cultural, you know, historic structure or anything, it is a prominent feature, and based on the analysis, especially with respect to finding number two of the CUP, in which it states that it will not be detrimental to the public, we felt that there is a potential of that detriment to the public welfare in terms of the appearance and the aesthetics of that. And so in order, for us, we felt that, or we believe that, in order to avoid a kind of like a patch-up work, a patch-up job, and that, you know, you have this potential for warping and just a general inconsistency with the visual aspect, it would be best, and which is why we conditioned that, the retexturing and the repainting be done to the entire tower, not just limited solely to that area where the work is at. So that's why, that's what staff's position is on that.
Can I have a question about ownership? Just to clarify, the church or the parish owns the building. There's not like a third party that owns the building that is organizing this lease, and so it's truly okay with the church?
Yes. So it is owned technically by the LA Archdiocese. And so they have their own, you know, real estate department, and we have communicated with them, and they've indicated that they, you know, they did authorize the submittal of this application.
Can I have anything further? We will open Public Communications then, and the first right goes to the applicant.
Well, he's making his way. Eduardo, I think it might help, maybe even just for my edification. As far as the issue of the surface between, it seems like what was proposed and what staff is recommending, is it the case that the resolution or the conditions of approval have the warning as staff would like to see it? And if so, can we note that just so that in the event there are adjustments or changes, we can all sort of have eyes on the same condition?
No, that's good, yes, because in order for, at least from a staff's analysis, in order for us to make that finding, we said, okay, if you're incorporating this condition, and it's condition number four on page number 24. And as you go through all the conditions, again, a lot of the intent is to ensure that there is consistency amongst, you know, between the work that's being done out there and the existing facilities so that, you know, for example, the cable trays need to be painted and matched, you know, with existing, you know, finished material. So anyhow, but a lot of that, the intent again from staff is to ensure that, you know, you have a consistent look that, you know, and you minimize the appearance and apparentness of anything, of any work that's been done on that structure.
Thank you.
All right, I guess it's my turn.
Welcome, yeah.
Good evening. My name is Alex Sadoroff. I work for Morrison-Hirschfield. We're the consultants. We were here not too long ago for another project.
Remember.
If I look familiar, that's probably why. So like staff said, this is a new project for Dish Wireless. We're actually really excited to be here today because this project started about two years ago. Obviously, it's taken a long time to get here, but we appreciate staff's support on this. And I'm not going to get too much into kind of Dish, but I'll just briefly do a recap. Dish Wireless is the nation's fourth-largest wireless carrier, and it's part of the kind of broken up after the T-Mobile Sprint merger. FCC has created competition, encouraging competition. So nationwide, Dish has been deploying its network. They've got some certain FCC mandates. The first milestone was met June 2023. Second milestone is June 2025. So this project here is kind of part of Phase Two, if you want to look at it like that, at a national level. And really, the purpose of this project and the objective here today is to provide initial coverage. There's no coverage currently by Dish. If you have a Dish device, it's not going to work in the city, right? So step one, entitle, permit, build these sites. Step two is we'll be able to market and get handsets to the general public. And this will be for 5G or fifth-generation technology, so for voice and data. That's kind of the brief recap, and like I said, I appreciate staff's support on this. I think we've come up with a really clean design that meets the development standards. There is one condition which staff alluded to earlier in the resolution that we'd like to ask the commission to remove and strike from the COAs, and that specifically is in regards to retexturing the entire steeple. I'll get to kind of the reasoning in a minute, and we've got some photos that we can look at and examples. But basically, you know, if you look at the tower, it's a 75-foot tower. If you look all around it, the tower's in really good shape for its age. The stucco is not peeling. There's no cracks. And I just recently drove by it. So we've agreed to make certain concessions on the painting. We feel like those are reasonable. But to retexture an entire steeple with stuccoed similar materials, it's a huge project. And if it needed it, sure, we would agree and say, this is absolutely needed. Like, it's going to be an improvement to the community. But if you kind of look at the texturing that's there right now and the condition of the stucco, it's really unnecessary, kind of unreasonable, in our opinion. And so we're agreeing to the conditions. We've got no problem with making sure it's not warping or peeling or that's matching, but it's kind of hard to say, well, you have to paint it, and you've got to retexture the entire steeple. We feel like that the paint and the other conditions that we're agreeing to here today are reasonable, but this is kind of going above and beyond. And I'll show you some examples here in a minute. So just to kind of give you a better concept of what the texturing could potentially look like, it's not always a bad texture job. If you've seen stucco or painting, you know, if you get a really good contractor that knows what they're doing, you can't tell the difference, right, sometimes between when there's a patch job. So up here is one example. This is a Dish Wireless project in San Diego, but they're all over LA. And you can tell that the antennas are inside that if you scroll down. So the antennas are all inside of that existing kind of cupola structure. And same thing, we've used FRP panels to disguise the antennas so you can't see them. And those FRP panels have been textured, so you can't see the seams, the joints. You can't see any of that. And I think this is a really good example of what it could look like.
And Alex, FRP is fiber-reinforced plastic? And it's a thinner material that allows the 5G signal to get out because it won't go through the bricks?
Exactly, yeah. If we use, like, you know, stucco material, you've got like a base coat, you've got a metal mesh, and you've got another coat. I'm not a stucco expert, but there's lots of layers, and antennas just would not be able to protrude through that. It'd cause interference. So what we use is the fiber-reinforced plastic material, so lightweight material, which basically allows the signal to go through it, but you can texture it, you can mold it. You can do a lot of cool different things to make it just look like brick or any other material, or stucco in this case. So I wanted to share this example because I feel like it's a really, really good example. And here, the city also enforced some conditions about not warping, texturing to match, right, to the satisfaction of the director. We're agreeing to all of that. We've got no issues with that. But to retexture an entire 75-foot steeple, that's already in good condition, kind of going above and beyond. So this example, I have another example. Any questions about this example here? I've got one more that I want to share. If you could share the next one. So this is a kind of an alternative design that we came up with last minute in a scramble to get to the commission today. And I wish we would have thought of this sooner, but it's here now, so we'll talk about it. So you can tell kind of at the top of the steeple, if you could point, there's a little trim detail right there. It's an existing detail on that steeple, and it's kind of a contrast color, as you can tell, and it goes all the way on four sides of that steeple structure. We've provided some photo simulations here that is an alternative design. If staff prefers that and the commission likes this design a little bit better, we could also add another matching trim piece to the bottom of where our screen's going to be so that, again, we're not having to retexture it, but we're still keeping to the look of the steeple that's there, using the existing architectural elements to blend in. And so that kind of, the idea is to take your eye away from anything that could potentially distract it from, as staff was trying to touch on earlier, is a difference in the texture. You know, there's not going to be a difference in the color, but maybe a difference in the texture.
So you would just texture that section is all that would be doing?
Yes.
In its entirety, though? Like, everything between the trim?
Yeah, it would be the full height and on all four sides, right? Or three sides, excuse me. But that bottom trim piece detail would go all around the tower to match. And so that's another alternative that we'd like to kind of propose in order to, you know, kind of get away from the idea of having to retexture. you know, kind of get away from the idea of having to re-texture the entire tower. I think this is more reasonable.
And does the church have to approve that, I would imagine, as well?
Yeah, absolutely.
But but they don't know about it yet?
Well, yeah, I mean, we've, we've had preliminary discussions, but it's kind of a balancing act, right? We've got to make the city happy, landlord happy. But our our agreement with the church will spell out all the the details.
So there's, in the existing tower, there's a couple squares on either side. And do you guys know what those are? And and not in the rendering, but in the existing conditions?
Right there.
Yeah, uh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, those are louvers.
They are? So it's it's an airflow event?
Yes.
Okay. And you are removing those and replacing those with your other vents?
Right.
That might need more airflow or something for the equipment?
Correct, yep.
Does that stuff get hot?
It does. And this steeple is actually open at the top, so if, you know, heat, heat rises. So that's, that's actually good for us because the the radios do get hot, especially when it's a hundred degrees outside.
Any of those ever catch on fire?
No. Not, yeah. So I, that's kind of what I want to share with the commission. Again, just to be clear, we we're agreeing to all the, all but one minor detail on the COAs here. We're agreeing to, you know, adhere to everything, but that we feel that the the re-texturing is a little bit above and beyond. And really, it's not necessary in this case when we've got some alternatives here. And we've got, we're agreeing to everything to the satisfaction of the director. So if you guys don't like it, say, hey, we need to touch this up, make it look better. That's on us, right? But to spend a lot more money to just re-texture when it doesn't need it, it's unnecessary.
So the mockup that you did from the other angle, there's no vent in there. But I'm assuming that will need a vent, just like you have it on your room?
No, this is accurate, the drawings are actually accurate.
Oh, it is, okay. So there's, but there's vents on other sides?
I think there's a vent on the south side, I want to say. It'll be on the south side. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I just want to get your input on commissioners. If if you like the kind of the the detail there a little bit better, if you think that's more reasonable, if you'd be supportive of making some minor changes to these conditions, the draft conditions.
Thank you, thanks, Alex. And at this time, we would ask if anyone else wants to come up and, you know, somebody hiding outside that wants to come in, doesn't seem like it. We will close public communications and just have a conversation for a bit.
I think it's important that that the property owners, that the church, approve that sort of a design. I mean, that's, I wouldn't see a problem with it if that's okay with them. Otherwise, I would certainly think that taking staff's recommendation to unfortunately do the entire tower is probably, I mean, I don't know construction that well. And I don't think that it would be an immediate thing that you would see. It would take a couple of years of weathering and wind and rain to be able to see that it's been patched at some point, if that were the case. You know, it would be down the road, not an immediate thing. Is that, is that true?
It it could, it could be one season, it could be five seasons. It depends on on the quality of.
When it gets done, I mean, according to, they finish it and patch it, it gets done, it looks great.
That's true.
But that's not the concern. The concern is when it gets weathered.
Yes, exactly.
Yes, and then to add to what Alex said, the property owners would also sign the conditions of approval, which are contained in the resolution. So they will have to agree to the conditions that we're proposing and design as well.
Right.
So then just again, procedurally, so say that we approved the conditions of approval with this adjustment, and then the church said, no, does it come back to us again then?
Or we would say, or yeah, an either or.
Well, their option, I guess their option is is if, if, well, the option regardless of whether it's, whether it's the applicant or the property owner, if they don't agree with that condition, then their recourse is to appeal the decision to the city council requesting that, you know, modification to that condition that was added.
Well, and so then is it a, could we approve the conditions of approval with this adjustment? And then if the church denies it, then it would go back to what staff originally recommended?
Sure, do they, well, whatever is approved is is sort of big, so to speak. If if the property owner for the church here or any other entitlement you're dealing with doesn't sign off on the conditions of approval, then it, it's, I I don't see how they would be able to to pull permits or proceed with building or do any other improvements from that point. So it would be a severe roadblock, to to say the least, if the property owner did not agree to the condition.
Right, I'm, I guess I'm just saying, could we make it an either or? Like, if we agreed to this modification, but it still has to go back to the church because they haven't seen this modification. So if they denied it, then it reverts back to what staff recommended as a condition of approval. And then it becomes up to the applicant if they want to move forward or not.
That, that sounds feasible, I mean, if you want to approve it. But I I guess my point is that their approval is essentially a part of the process. So I I think that the difference between what you're describing is that you want to have some affirmative sign off on this particular condition before you consider approval. That seems like the.
I just don't want to make the applicant, I guess, come back to us. Say that the church says, no, we don't like the look of that for whatever reason. But we're okay with, you know, re-stuccoing the entire steeple. And then it just becomes the applicant's choice of whether they want to appeal that or not, I guess.
Go ahead, and we would agree to this. But if the church doesn't agree to that, then they'd have to, then the the applicant would have to do the entire column. That's the either or. And then it would be, as you say, it would be up to the applicant.
So let's go to option A. So describe option A is not, is not resurfacing the entire thing?
No, just the section and add adding the added trim at the bottom. So they've got that, just that area. That's, that's the first thing. Fine with the city, go ahead. But then the church says, no, 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 that changes the entire look of, and I, and and, you know, we've had this look and we don't like that. So then, okay, that's fine because they don't want to have that done, even though it would be okay with the city. They don't want to do it? Then the next thing would be that we, what staff recommends is to do the entire tower.
I I think you can make it or, I I, yeah, I think it could be A or B from a legal perspective. I just would want to make sure since it was raised before the issue of of findings and whether the findings necessary for the conditional use permit could be made if in the scenario where we're not sticking with staff's recommendation that's in condition four now. So if staff is comfortable with the the alternative to their proposal in condition four, to to add another scenario, another option, if we're confident that the same findings could be made affirmatively for the CEP, then then I see no legal issue.
Well, I I I would say, high level, I think staff is, I think from a staff perspective, this is definitely a step in the right direction. And I think we'd be comfortable with it with a couple provisions added to to the condition. I guess my concern, I guess from a staff's perspective concern is you have a, you have a cornice along the top and then you'd have the, another cornice along, you know, probably two thirds of the way up. I think that's good. It's a good design. You know, I think it it will, would actually, you know, help even break up, you know, the, you know, some people would look at it as a monolithic structure. But, you know, it breaks it up and I think it provides the opportunity to the applicant to then just limit the re-stuck, re-texturing to that area. But my, I think our concern still is, 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 is the, is the following. I'm going to try to explain this verbally and hopefully this comes across. So the, the applicant is going to come in and cut out a portion of the facade. We all know that. There is a certain distance from the very top of 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 that, of that band to where the opening is going to be. So I would say that if that entire section is re-stuccoed and not just the area, the area immediately around the carved out portion is re-textured and stuck and applied to that, I think we would be okay with that because it 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 addresses our concern. So.
And I think that's what he's saying, right? You would resurface, you'd refinish the entire band in between those corners?
Yes, exactly. You resurf, yes, resurface that entire portion of the, of that facade. I think if that's the intent and it, you know, I think it 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 would, I think, satisfy staff's concern that you end up with that, with that appearance, that patch up, warping or discoloration, discontinuity. Because at least you have a band. Because even if, if, even if you don't perfectly match the 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 resurface, even if the resurfacing does not match the rest of it, at least there's a band that kind of creates a visual, a design that that cuts off that continuity.
Yeah.
I mean, it's kind of like the obelisk in 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 Washington DC, where if you really look at it, you know, the materials are, you know, it was, it's different.
Right.
But you really have to have have an eye for that. But in in this situation, I think that that the addition of 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 that lower cornice and stuccoing the entire area within those two cornices.
Because any discoloration or change would be that whole section.
Right, exactly.
As a unit.
Yes, and it may not, and from a staff, that may not be that bad either bec, or very, you know, because you, it's it's contained within these two cornices.
Yeah, I mean, I totally appreciate that intent and that is the best way to segment that project. I would say, first of all, I appreciate staff acknowledging that the visual appearance of this thing is really important. If you're going to cut out a window and replace it with FRP, I'm concerned that even if you textured over it, at some point, you might start to get some, you know, at certain times of day, certain light, you're gonna, you might see a little bit of variation. Now, seventy-five feet up and most people are driving by, they may not notice. I would suggest that really trying to match the color and the texture of the rest of the, of the rest of the tower is critical. I mean, even if it's a contained belly band, if it's off five percent, three percent, two percent, you're going to see it now as a band, whereas the original design was just a nice, clean monolith. So, yeah, I I would, I'd, I'd want to see some condition where, you know, visually it has to match very well. And and maybe that's subjective, but.
No, and the applicant is proposing to repaint the steeple as a whole as well. So we don't believe there will be a difference, at least in the color. It's just more so the texture that we're very worried about.
That's, that helps.
And I think another thing we can do to 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 address the chair's concern about, you know, the church not, you know, maybe saying, hell, we don't want to do this, is we could keep the 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 condition of approval number four as is. But I think we can add alternatively, then, you know, just craft up some language that addresses that, you know, this, this, this cornice band is, you know, it can suffice. And the entire portion needs to be refinished of that area in between the two bands. And then that will, so it kind of creates that this or that. And then leave, and then that would be in between the the last sentence, which says, further, both the entire steeple and panels shall be painted to match the existing building. So that at least, you know, gets gets the the your concern about the entirety. So we could.
If I'm, yeah, I think, so what I'm hearing, Eduardo, we would just add the option relating to that particular segment in sentence two and condition four?
Yes.
And the balance would remain the same?
Correct. So after the second sentence, so it says the entire steeple. So I guess, yeah, so the entire steeple shall be re-textured to include light stucco finish of a material consistent with the existing church buildings on site. Alternatively.
And then we have the description of the.
Yes, we can add the description for this.
Of the resurfacing just for that segment?
Exactly.
And then the rest covers the painting and and all that?
Exactly. So, and I think with that, I mean, those two methods would still address our concerns. And at that point, we, at that point, we can, that finding still could be made.
Works for me.
Works for me.
Is this like a five G conduit to heaven? Is there a, is there some sort of?
Yeah, only when they planted in your brain.
That's right.
Okay, then I think if there's consensus, anyone brave enough to make a motion?
I I would say that I, to make a motion, adding the language as Eduardo just described. And and that would be my motion.
And just to flesh it out, that would be a motion to approve the resolution?
Adding after that, alternatively, after the second sentence on exhibit A, conditions of approval, item number four.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
I second.
And I'll take votes, Commissioner Inga?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Heschler?
Yes.
And Chair Keldorf?
Yes.
Motion passes four oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearing, item three on our agenda, zone text amendment to implement program nine of the city's housing element.
Chair, so, so the item before you is is a zone text amendment and and that's the city's implementing program nine of the city's housing element. As you, as you may well recall, we spent quite a bit of time getting the housing element put together back last, last year, almost a year to date. City council adopted the revised housing element for the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine planning period. HCE had.
Issued a conditional approval letter back earlier this year in January, but delayed full certification of the, of the actual housing element, provided that we conduct certain milestones in order to effectuate the housing element. So city staff is currently working on implementation of the required zone changes and that will be coming before you in in early twenty twenty-four. The housing element has other programs that we are to implement, one of which is described in program nine. And that's, I I did provide a, an excerpt of that and that's on pages seventy-seven through seventy-nine in the packet. So these include a variety of zone text amendments. As I indicated earlier, some of which have already been done. If you all recall, we did the zone text amendments with the density bonus, the SROs and micro units, then the transitional supportive housing that was done earlier this year. So the amendments here include amendments to to implement residential care facilities, emergency shelters, low barrier navigation centers, employee housing, reasonable accommodations, and senior housing. Now, the zone text amendment makes modifications and amendments primarily to existing provisions that are already contained within the city's zoning code, including definitions to ensure consistency with state law and 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 other recently adopted bills, Senate bills and assembly bills, such as residential care facilities, emergency shelters, employee housing. But most notable with this amendment is the inclusion of low barrier navigation centers. And that's required per AB one oh one. I think that was back in the twenty twenty-one session. And a new provision for reasonable accommodations, that's kind of the two biggest things. Now, with regards to low barrier centers, now, that's a type of shelter where the focus is to house individuals or families that are experiencing homelessness, but on a temporary, temporary basis, and then move them, move them into permanent housing. The distinction there is that these types of uses are, you know, have onsite case managers that work to connect that individual or family to to income and public benefits and health services. So it's not just a facility where people are just there with, you know, without any oversight. It's a facility where it actively tries to get them to permanent housing. So that's kind of one of the the big things that we had committed to. And that's, again, something that that is required through our housing element. And some of these would be, you know, in terms of.
And some of these would be, uh, you know, in terms of their location, would be, uh, within any kind of mixed use or non-residential areas, so. Uh, the second one, as I indicated-
With, with the exception of zone for multifamily, right?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, so it's mixed use, industrial, and zone for multifamily.
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry, can I, is now an okay time to ask some questions about that?
No, no, go ahead.
So, what we're approving is the definition and the language-
Mm-hmm.
...but not specific sites because it is by nature now something that is state-required? So, we are really just approving the language that's going into our housing element?
Uh, it's approving the language that will go, that's going into our municipal code, right?
Yeah.
Right, right. So, it's not approving any kind of development, it's not approving any kind of project, it's just saying, yes, um, you know, per, per state law and, and per housing element, we need to have provisions that allow for them, uh, and so we're just saying, yes, they are allowed within where, you know, within the areas that the state law, you know, wants us to allow them for, and, uh, there are provisions for implementing or, you know, the actual use itself. Again, they need to have an onsite case manager, so it's not like you're, uh, like a typical, I hate to use the, the term shelter, but it is a shelter because it's a temporary situation, but it's not a shelter where people come, you know, may spend one night and then move on, or, or, the transient nature of it, um, is, is not as what you would typically historically think as a shelter, where it's, there's constant turnover. Um, they try to have people onsite to connect them to that next level in, in, in a person's life and, and help them find permanent housing. So, there, it's an active, um, uh, role that, that they're taking.
And those project, if that were to happen, it's by right, so it's not a project, the thing comes before us-
Correct.
-and we make any sort of a-
Correct.
-approval on.
Correct, yes.
If I, if I may, and, and as you mentioned, the sort of state mandates for a lot of these facilities, um, a, a part of that is that they are by right, and we're precluded from requiring a conditional use permit or a discretionary entitlement. Um, and then just taking one step back to emphasize, um, what Eduardo was getting at, at the beginning, is that it's sort of a, a leverage game that HCD plays to where the blueprint for planning for zoning, which is a general plan that includes the housing element, they don't want to take jurisdictions a word for it, that they're going to go and do the work to conform the underlying zoning and regulations to match the, the housing element and general plan. They want, before they, they certify the housing element, to make sure that all of the stuff underneath matches what's required, uh, under the blueprint, so that's sort of the strategy.
Thank you.
So, okay, um, yeah, and, and that, the whole section in terms of low, low, low-barrier navigation, that's, um, on page seventy-three, and you'll see that there are certain development and operational standards, so it's not, so even though, like you said before, they are allowed by right, yes, they're allowed by right, but there are certain operational standards that they have to adhere to in order to continue to, or to even go in there. Uh, let's see, the second, uh, issue or, or item that's really, um, uh, big in this, in this zone text amendment is the, um, uh, reasonable accommodations. So, reasonable accommodations, uh, i- is, is in essence is a process to allow deviations from the, from the development standards of, of our code. Typically, what comes before you are adjustments, um, variances, and so those are requests, those are also requests to deviate from the code, but the difference between those two types of discretionary items versus a reasonable accommodation is that, um, A, variances and adjustments run with the land, and B, uh, you have to prove some sort of hardship or, or something unique about the property in order to make the finding for, for adjustments and, and variances. A reasonable accommodation actually does not run with the land, and it's not based on any unique characteristic of a property, it's actually based on the, um, uh, you know, it, it, it's, it, it runs with the, with the, with the occupant or the resident, and it's based on, on a, on a disability that that person has. And so, for example, if someone came in and said, "You know what?", I, I remember this one in particular, uh, case we had in another city, is, is, is we had someone come in and say, "You know what? The way our property is developed, the front yard is where..." Oh, I have a child that is severely, uh, um, um, you know, mentally handicapped, and my child likes to be outside, and so our property, our house is built in the back of the property, we have this huge front yard setback. Typically, you know, front yard areas, fences are limited at like three feet, forty-two inches, well, the child could easily get over that. So, what they said, "Okay, well, you know, can we have a, you know, six, seven-foot wrought iron fence that way, you know, prevents that, our child from climbing over that?". So, we issued a, a reasonable accommodation, um, for, for the, because of the disability of the child. Now, the other, so once, and then there are conditions in there, that once the, the occupant or resident of, uh, with a disability vacates the property, then all those improvements that were done need to be removed at that point. And the, the ways that we catch that is, uh, is we, you know, include a condition that those, uh, that that approval gets memorialized by, uh, by, uh, um, uh, recording a covenant on the property, that way, you know, everyone's kind of known that.
And, and is it the responsibility of whoever, uh, makes those improvements needs to revert when they vacate?
Yes, upon vacation, right.
So, it's not like it's, uh, um, you know, non-conforming, and it can live in perpetuity that way?
Exactly, exactly, it runs, yes. So, unlike the variance that runs with the land, this only runs with, with the individual, with the, with the, with the disability.
Okay.
So, so, yeah, so that, um, so any, like I said, any improvements approved via, uh, re-, you know, um, um, a reasonable accommodations, those improvements must be removed when the applicant no longer resides there. So, i- in essence, the, these zone text amendments that are proposed before you, um, you know, they advance our housing element, um, what we've committed to, to, to HCD, uh, puts us in, in good standing with them and gets us that one step closer to full certification, and, uh, shows them that we are making process, uh, progress, we're removing barriers and governmental constraints, et cetera, et cetera. And so with that, um, you know, our, we do recommend that you adopt the associated, uh, resolution recommending that the city council approve the, uh, proposed zone text amendment that's been for you. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Um, Eduardo, can you explain to me the employee housing change? But I read it, I read it again, I don't know that I understand the adjustment.
Yeah, the, if, if the employee, where is it at? Specify needs to look at it.
Um, sixty-three, there's the definition.
While Eduardo's looking for that, uh, I'll note that the statutory scheme that relates to employee housing is very much seen through the lens of farmworker housing, um, so it, it was designed to address, um, onsite housing concerns for, for farmworkers, so that shapes a lot of the terms of the law, it's not a best fit for, for every community, but the, the mandate is that we do sort of have some kind of nod and, and allowance of that type of housing.
Sure, and it's a human rights issue in the law.
Okay, so it's not, I'm making it a bigger thing in my mind, like when we talk about employee housing for firefighters and police officers in town, and thinking that it, we're not talking about the same thing here.
No, we're not, we're not, we're talking about it in terms of, and Hawkins, uh, said it nicely, is, is exactly that. Because I, I kind of have this, kind of a similar concern, and after speaking with, with city attorney's office, they're like, "No, it's, it's really related to farmers", and it really made sense at the end because, you know, I think a lot of cities put that in there, kind of as a, as a checkbox for HCD, and kind of like a, like a nod to say, "Hey, look, we are advancing, you know, uh, more inclusionary type housing."
Okay, that makes sense.
Public comment?
Oh, yes, thank you, yeah. Thank you, Eduardo, now is the time for public comments. Come on up. All right, seeing none, we will close public comm-, public communications on this item. Um, any other questions for staff?
Yeah, uh, the reasonable accommodations, you, your example was a good one about the fence, is there, are there other things that you guys, that, that staff can foresee that might be unexpected, and, you know, I realize this is a, a state mandate, and we're trying to get the language right, but I'm just, I'm just kind of thinking ahead what, uh, what that could actually look like.
No, that's true, uh, you know, when, when you were saying that, when I was giving that example, I, I, there was also another example in another city, and that was more of a hillside community that I worked in, and, um, but it had to do with, with a, a, a ramp that led from the driveway garage to the main residence, and it, the, the applicant was proposing it to go over this extreme slope, which we didn't allow for, uh, construction over. But got me also thinking, now that you say that, I mean, we could have a situation, at least in El Segundo, where, uh, perhaps like an ADA ramp, that, you know, that, you know, could be built in the front.
Mm-hmm.
And so, by code right now, I mean, that could be seen as, you know, looking at it just solely on zoning terms, I don't know, I mean, you know, it's in the front yard setback, you know, you can't have anything, so something like that could, could be, we could probably see.
Sure.
Um, or in the back, I know that, you know, there are a cou-, one property in particular, and, 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 not that they would need this, but there is a topographical change between where the main residence is at and their, uh, which is up near the front, but in the back, which takes access up an alley, um, you know, there's a pretty significant difference in, in, uh, so that, that may require some sort of structure or some sort of improvements if they were to come in and say, "Yeah, you know, the only way I can get from my car to my house is, you know, some type of structure or some sort of, you know, police system", I don't know, that will get me up there.
Right.
Uh, but we not comply with the code, again, that's what this is intended for.
Gotcha.
Thank you. Excuse me.
Anything else? Okay, we're ready to approve or make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number two-nine-four-one, recommending that the city council find the proposed ordinance exempt from CEQA pursuant to environmental assessment number one-three-four-five, and approve the proposed ordinance ZTA number two-three-zero-two, uh, mending Title XV of the El Segundo municipal code to implement Program Nine of the El Segundo housing element.
All right, second?
And I'll take votes, Commissioner Inga-
Yes.
Commissioner Newman-
Aye.
Vice Chair Heschler-
Aye.
Chair Keldorf-
Yes.
Motion passes for all.
Thank you. Eduardo, no new business, any report, Eduardo, from the community development department?
Uh, sure, a couple things, so, um, I sent a follow-up email to every commissioner earlier this week about our planning commission, not our, but the Planning Commissioners Academy that's sponsored by the League of California Cities, again, not a requirement, but if you'd like to go, registration is now open, let me know, um, ideally by, 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 uh, the end of January, so that we can get, uh, we can get the, the discounted rate, uh, but it is going to be, uh, March sixth through the eighth, it's a good opportunity to, you know, do some, uh, um, networking with other planning commissioners, and you can gloat about how your staff is doing a great job, and, thought I'd plug that, uh, but anyhow, but yeah, it's, it's good, you know, and it's good just to get, um, you know, you know, they have a range of topics that, that, that they have going on, so. It's here, uh, locally at the Hilton, at Long Beach Hilton, so if you're interested in going, let me know, we'll register you, and, uh, you know, um, that, the cost of that will be covered by the city for, for you guys.
Thank you.
A couple other, uh, announcements, so, at the last, uh, ca-, commission, or council meeting, um, a couple days ago, on the seventh, a couple items that were, uh, went before them, uh, Smoky Hollow specific plan, the second reading of that occurred, so the Smoky Hollow, uh, specific plan, as you guys had, had approved it, will go into effect, um, at, at the beginning of, of December. Uh, the second item, which, um, has been on everyone's radar, but nev-, but didn't come back to planning commission because we did that last year, was with regards to the home share. Um, as, as you recall, last year we came before you to, and you guys, and the, the commission had, uh, recommended to the council to, you know, uh, make this a permanent, uh, th-, um, um, uh, ordinance, we went before them last year, uh, and as I in-, indicated to the, to the council, they, they extended the pilot program because, you know, we're just coming out of COVID restrictions, the travel industry was kind of bouncing back, so they just wanted to kind of get a, an additional year under the belt to see if anything else, and I think primarily was to also, uh, look at ways in which, uh, we could minimize the amount of, uh, illegal listings and, and violations out there, so, uh, that went before the council, and again, it is for home sharing, not for whole house, uh, it is something that, uh, that was strategically, uh, approved by the council, because home shares, at least in our experiences, were a type of use that had minimal types of impacts that were going on and associated with whole house, where the owner is not on-site, uh, and those whole house vacant, um, or, uh, homeowners tend to have situations where they can become party houses and just become a, a thorn in the side of some of the community, which happened to us in a couple neighborhoods.
Sure.
Um, and so it was very, uh, telling, uh, why the council ultimately, and, and of course, applying commission was less just limited to just home sharing, so. That's what was approved, so the pilot program will officially end, and it'll become a permanent, uh, thing where, where they would be allowed through a home sharing permit process.
And Eduardo, how many people have signed up for this program? How many applications?
So, currently we have a total of twenty-four, yes. And that's, yeah, those are the three items I wanted to just convey to the commission.
Thank you. Any update on the, uh, gateway sign there at Maiden Imperial? Ha, just curious, just because, go on.
Um, no, I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't have anything to report on that, I apologize, I should have reached out to-
No, just tell us who to bother.
Oh, Elias Assun over and Public Works Director.
Oh, no.
Number, no, I will not, I will not disclose this.
Scott Mittner.
Yeah.
Scott Mittner.
Oh, man.
Sorry, Scott, if you're watching.
Thank you. Any report from our city attorney's office?
I'll just double down on recommending the, the league's planning commissioner training, there's some private entities that do trainings that can be hit or miss, but, uh, the league does put a lot of TLC in, in their training, so definitely recommend that, and I believe their, um, the archive, the prior, um, uh, conferences that they've had for planning, and even the city attorneys and other folks that are great resources, I, sometimes I'll take a peek at the stuff for planning, or commissioners, city managers, definitely, um, their website is definitely a good resource for all kinds of things.
Thank you. Planning commissioner comments?
Not tonight.
Nothing.
I know, weird, right?
Uh, nothing, uh, we have Thanksgiving coming up, wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and did we say forty-eight days until, uh, Christmas Eve? So, it's coming, it's, it's here, just happy Thursday.
Happy Thursday.
Happy Thursday, okay. I'll say on Tuesday, I think, is that the fourteenth, there's, the DEI committee is putting on their, um, United Against Heat Candlelight Vigil at four-thirty in the Plaza, and feels like, oh, something the world El Segundo could use right now, so. Bring back some of those good Little League World Series champion feelings, and come out and support each other.
It's really nice.
Um, okay, that is it, we adjourn.
And again, just when you adjourn, if you adjourn to the December meeting, because the next meeting is technically on Thanksgiving, unless we want to be carving a turkey up here, we'll just adjourn now to the-
So, we adjourn till December-
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you.